Start. Today's Douglas County Board of Commissioners Meeting. For the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the North Wall. And we ask that those in the audience and in the chambers, please silence your cellphones. Note, there's an automatic defibrillator that's here if anybody needs that for any reason. And with that, I ask everybody to stand for the Plaid of Lead.
Plaid of Lead, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
With that, we'll call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization Meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Morgan. Mr. Chair.
Here.
All present.
Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 6, 2018. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, February 2017, 2018 as a date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. It's a motion by Commissioner Duda, is there a second? There's a second by Commissioner Borgeson. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Got it.
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstained, all our commissioners voting yes. Um, well, I did, you know, was it because of a check?
He abstained because of the...
But we're not, but we're not on, but we're not on that item, though.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Item C is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seeing none, again, are there any citizens' comments on items not listed on the Board of Equalization agenda? Seeing none, we go to resolutions and Item D, approval of the applications for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the County of Treasury. And we do not. There's a motion by Commissioner Duda to approve Item D and adjourn, and a second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
We're now called to order Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here.
All present.
Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, January 9, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
Item two is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any items not officially listed on the Douglas County Board of Corrections agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Item three, and the report of the Director of Corrections, Dr. Foxall.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yeah, before you, the Board of Corrections report for January 2018. First, start off with a quick briefing on the construction project, which was facilitated by the Public Safety Bond. We are well underway with the Department of Corrections. We are ahead of schedule and work on six... Work on six of the eight housing units in the annex part of the jail, which is a 1988 construction, is progressing. And we've got six of the eight housing, seven of the eight housing units are completed. So we expect to finish that project in the annex in March of 2018, and then we'll move on to, we'll move on to the next phase, which would be the old side. The work is estimated to begin on the old side of the facility. That's a 1976 construction aspect in May, approximately May of 2018. Following the seventh, any questions on the construction project? Excuse me. Any questions on the construction project? Okay. Administrative services, closure number one. Following the seventh month of the fiscal year of 1718, we came in under budget. We'll continue to monitor that. As you know, last reporting period, we were over budget. We're dealing with overtime issues, and that's driving, impacting a lot of our, a lot of our budget, our expenses. Closure number two, corrections in-house programs. Community corrections, Justine Wall, Mike Myers attended the National Association of Counties Health and Justice Forum in January. Many of the innovative ideas with regard to the integration of health and criminal justice systems were shared, which will be explored for possible implementation in Douglas County. Work release officer Tanya Burnside was Douglas County's recipient of the Martin Luther King Jr. Award last month. Officer Burnside is a valuable asset to Douglas County in ways that reach well beyond her primary role as a correctional officer. So say congratulations to her again, and be very proud of her accomplishments in the past and her accomplishments that she's currently engaged in and what we foresee for her in the future as well. Nebraska Department of Labor began offering services in the veterans' housing unit in January, and will expand these services to other areas of the jail in the coming months. We're very excited about that opportunity as well, under the community corrections header. Twenty-four-seven alcohol sobriety program. They had another strong month with 46 admissions. The month concluded with a record high count of 158 people on the 24/7 alcohol sobriety program. The alcohol side of it, 2,830 breath tests were completed, 14 were positive for alcohol use, or 11 no-shows for testing. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99 percent, 99.1 percent, actually. Forty-two individuals were monitored for a total of 1,017 days of SCRAM. There was, there weren't any no-shows. There was one tampering violation, one alcohol violation. And the overhaul, overall SCRAM compliance rate was 90...
Would you tell us what SCRAM is? Always forget.
Sure. That's GPS monitoring for alcohol sobriety.
Is it SCRAM? Is that the, is the alcohol testing?
That's, yes. That's just, it's a SCRAM, it's a SCRAM bracelet, and it's a device that you put on the individual's ankle, and it detects the presence of alcohol.
It's different than a breath test?
Yes, sir, it is. Yes, sir, it is.
It's just acronyms always throw me in my...
Yes, sorry.
Short memory.
Yeah, it's used in lieu of the breath test.
Got it. Thank you.
No alcohol, one alcohol violations, and the overall SCRAM compliance rate was 99.8 percent. There were 267 drug tests administered. There were eight drug test violations. There were no positive drug patch violations, and there was one no-show for drug testing. So it's a very good program. I think we got good accountability built into the program. We have enough varied ways to provide that accountability, so we're pleased with the progression of the program. And every month, it continues to, participation continues to increase, so we're pleased with that as well. Work release admitted 32 individuals last month. Work release clients donated 194 hours of community service to various private and charitable foundations, including a new partnership with Keep Home Home Beautiful. House arrest admitted 90 individuals last month through the RAP program or the Reentry Assistance Program. There were 26 individuals admitted to RAP, five individuals received a GED. First placements in RAP from Sarpy County took place last month as well. That's a partnership we talked about in the past. Community corrections, or, excuse me, in-house programs. Fifty-six individuals were admitted to in-house programs in the jail. Three individuals achieved their GEDs. Pretrial services, 372 people were placed on pretrial last month. Monitoring, 1,078. Twelve were referred for priority prosecution, and 185 bed days were saved as a result of that. Closure number three, American Corrections Association Audit Hearing for the main facility and Community Corrections took place at the ACA Winter Conference. Both facilities were reaccredited for another three years. We're very proud of that accomplishment as well. With respect to personnel, a new higher class, 18-1, started February 12, yesterday, Monday. Expect graduation to come in the next five weeks. I'll be sending out a announcement for the graduation. This new class comes, very important time for us. We are understaffed, about 43 under right now with the addition of the new class. We made, working on a number of different plans, a number of different meetings, a number of different strategies to get our staffing back up. It's a difficult time for us, but we sat down in meetings with the FOP, with the ACLA in terms of recruiting efforts. I think the recruiting efforts are underway, and a little too early to assess the yield in those recruiting efforts. But one of the things we'd like to build into the application process is one of those, how did you hear about us? And then that will give us some indication as to where we're going to put more effort into the recruiting process. So we are struggling with, with our staffing. We will continue to meet with our internal stakeholders to address those issues, but it's, 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 it's a significant issue for us, particularly in lieu of the fact that our average daily population for 2017 was an annual, was a record, a record high for the department in the history of the Department of Corrections. And based on the numbers that I see in the first month, January of 2018, I don't see any regression from that record-high number. In fact, in six hours of yesterday, 0700, seven o'clock in the morning, to 1,400 hours, it'd be a six hours, seven hours run, we booked in 34 people. So it's very busy. And sustaining record-high numbers is, it puts pressure on my staff, and that's very concerning. It drives the overtime, it drives the mandatory overtime. It puts pressure on, on the facility. And again, numerous meetings to not only address recruitment issues, attrition issues, hiring issues, but also looking at other issues related to the intake and trying to drill down into what's driving the intake. And meetings with some other criminal justice partners to discuss with them what exactly is, is the impetus behind the spike in the population, and trying to develop some strategies to address that. So the pretrial population over the past two years, 2015 forward, is by 28 percent. That's huge in a very short period of time. So I will continue to, to brief you on what our efforts are with respect to the staffing. The population and staffing puts tremendous strain on us, but I will continue to brief you on what our strategies are, excuse me, going forward. Speaking of population, enclosure number five. And by the way, our population today is 1,272. It's in the dead of winter, folks. Our population should not be 1,272 in the dead of winter, in February. Our female population is 182. For a long time, we ran 10, 9, 10 percent females in secure custody. Now we're running 14, 15 percent females.
Dr. Foxall?
Sir?
I, buzzer was out to ask to speak, but...
Well, let me, let me tell you to hold on, because you got, you got people in the queue, so I just have to block you here.
Okay, I'll, let me know when I'm up.
Okay.
Let me continue on with population. We have, last month, we had 1,626 admissions. 1,565 releases last month. Our high count was 1,287, pushing 1,300, again, in the middle of winter, when our counts traditionally are, are low, 1050, 1,000, 1020, something like that. And here we sit, in January, we had a high count of almost 1,300 people. Our low count was 1,213, so in January, we never broke below 1,200. Our ADP, our average daily population, is 1,245. US Marshal population decreased. ICE population increased a little bit. Felony population hours decreased, but despite the decrease in the felony pretrial population, pretrial detainees as a percentage of the population increased. Misdemeanor population was down just a little bit. However, the female population was up. Female population hit a high of 189, which, as I said, is approximately 15 percent of our ADP, and traditionally has been 10 percent. The three female housing units still remain open. Custodial sanction bed days, I've added this to our population count. In course, during the month, there were 318 bed days for custodial sanctions. Any questions on population before I move on to the next enclosure?
We have Commissioner Kraft, Kavanaugh, Morgan, Boyle. Commissioner Kraft.
Excuse me?
Mine's not on population, so...
Okay. You want to wait then?
I'll wait.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Mine's actually on staffing. Thank you for this report. You know, it looks like we're in a, you know, chronic, are you okay?
I'm fine. I just tail into a cold.
Lot of that going around.
Not the first.
Chronic continual understaffing situation, you know, I've noticed that on our Civil Service Commission vacant posting, we just have a standing posting every week for 20 Correction Officer Ones and 20 Correction Officers Twos. I don't know how long that's been there, but I've noticed that it doesn't go away. And then if you go to the staffing, where Correction Officer Two were, looks like understaffed by about 20, and Correction Officer One were understaffed by about 30, and overall, were understaffed by about 12 percent. Then you go to the overtime on page 10, and between January 2017 and December 2017, overtime hours have basically doubled, going from just under 20,000 and spiking at, looks like 40,000 hours, right? That's hours. So everybody's working a ton of overtime, and we're chronically understaffed. I know that you are as concerned as everyone about this because it not only impacts on budget, but it impacts on the safety of the facility. So if you could give us a little more detail on where we go forward in terms of improving this, if there's something the Board should, should do, or if there's something we could do together, because this, this doesn't seem sustainable to me.
Well, I, we've had a number of different meetings. We're looking at a number of different things. In fact, the President of the FOP is here today, and we were talking this morning about issues related to overtime, voluntary overtime, mandatory overtime. We've sat down, had a number of different meetings, and we're still putting our strategies together, but it's, it's on a number of different fronts, and it's, it's the attrition, it's the inability to hire. Our applicant pool is not as big as it used to be. You know, a few years ago, we had, a couple, three years ago, we ran two classes to 2025, and we were, we were sitting pretty good. But now, our applicant pool is low. We have people that apply, don't, don't show for the testing. We have higher-than-normal attrition based on where we were a couple of years ago. We were for, for a long time, we were two and a half a month on our attrition. We're way past that now. The economy impacts that, applicants and people that decide that maybe this isn't quite the job for them, so they go someplace else. And the overtime certainly influences people's desire to stay, so we'll talk about that. But also, the count, I mean, the count is, to sustain those, sustain those high numbers over time, impacts the work environment, the... And the populations, and I've spoken to you on numerous occasions about what impacts our population with mentally ill coming in, the high acuity level of the mentally ill coming in. That sets a different dynamic for, for our population, for the work environment, for the safety of our staff. And so it's not just one thing, but we have to look at numerous, manifold issues related to retention, hiring, work environment, ops, external stakeholders, internal stakeholders, population, type of population, mental health, developmentally disabled, counts, record-high felony filings. All of those things are, are in the cauldron together, spinning and impacting, and we're trying to, you can't just focus on one thing and say, wow, we can just focus on getting applicants to the pool, then we're good. Well, no, because then you got to talk about the attrition. But then you have to look at the type of people that are coming into the facility on the inmate side, and, and what's that do to the dynamic of the work environment? The population that we had today compared to what we had five years ago, 10 years ago, that's different. That's different. And I've spoken to that numerous times. I won't control my population, I wish I could, but I can't. I'm limited by the refusals that we have coming in the back door, but it's a different population.
And, you know, I appreciate that. I think that you've got a good grasp of the kind of perfect storm of factors that have led us to this situation. And what I'm interested in, you know, maybe working with you on, is, okay, how do we get from here to a more sustainable situation where we're fully staffed, where the overtime isn't spiraling out of control? I don't know how we sustain 100 percent increases in overtime year over year. And I agree with you, you have no control whatsoever of who shows up on your doorstep. You take who the system brings to you. So facing all of those challenges, and I, I think you have a firm grasp of what they are, just outline them for us. I guess I'd be looking going forward to maybe working on a plan to, to maybe make it better. And part of it appears to me to be, you're understaffed, and you're understaffed, you're underauthorized staff that you're budgeted to have, and you have standing requests for, you know, 40 people that have been on the books for some time. So, you know, how do we, how do we get to that point? And what do we need to do? Because I don't, I don't know, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we can go on much longer like this without serious problems. I'd hate to see us end up like the state of Nebraska has been with their correctional system. I've been proud of our record as, I think, the best correctional facility in the state. But we've got to address this, I believe, and if it takes, you know, involvement from the Board or involvement from all the people in the Department of Corrections, I'd be more than willing to participate in that. And, and I don't want to put you on the spot here, I don't expect you to come up with a silver bullet solution here today, but I, I do want to have this discussion with you going forward and seeing if we can develop some, some way forward out of this, this kind of chronic understaffing overtime situation.
Well, another thing for you to think about is if my population trend does not reverse, then I'm going to run out of room pretty quick.
All right.
And then we're talking about if farming people out or adding another one or more housing units. And 64 beds times two, and $20,000, you're talking 15 to 20 million to build.
And you point to a significant factor in this overall multifaceted problem, and I think Commissioner Rogers has been working on this for some time, which is relative to the, to the, the people that are there on bond holds, and whether or not all those people need to be incarcerated while they're awaiting disposition in the criminal justice system, and how we get from maybe where we are today to a position. I think there's a national initiative that we're involved with relative to that. And I, you know, I think that's one part of this, you know, we don't want to be incarcerating anybody who we don't absolutely have to incarcerate, and how that impacts on your population numbers is, is something that, you know, I certainly would like a better handle on, and I'll follow up with you on that, but I think that that points to, to a big problem, is how we do the job, the important job of, of handling the people that we need to handle. There are people that need to be in the correctional center for the public safety purposes, and no more. I mean, we're not, we're not a mental health institution, we're not an indigest care institution, you know, I mean, we should be doing just the corrections job and no more to, to maybe bring those population numbers down. Because if I hear you right, we're, we're pretty much always running at maximum, right?
We've got 1,453 beds, and we're pushing close to 13, 1,300, we're pretty much full. Based on the way we classify, minimum, medium, max, and you can't put a minimum into a max bed, so frequently, we're out of max beds. We're running out of medium beds. And when we get to 1,300, we're, we've got some space problems for the more difficult inmates that are coming in.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Morgan, he was up next. Yesterday, we had over a two-hour meeting on this subject, and I intend to, we're going to be following up on the material we discussed, and all the things you brought up were discussed at great painful length. And the Personnel Department is working on a number of things, one of which is that during the course of that meeting, it was brought out that we're not competitive in pay. And so, you know, and Mr. Bloomingdale pointed out very well, and I agree with him totally, that when you start, the starting pay is how much per hour?
Seventeen thirty.
Seventeen something an hour. And Potawatomi County is 21. And so what this means is that I asked the, and they're working on it, what, what this is going to mean for us to start offering $21 an hour to start? What, how that affects the budget? What happens to the people who are making that money now, who've been there for five years or whatever? So it's the compaction question, pretty complicated. We need to get a figure on what that's going to cost, because that's, we need to be competitive at least on the money, for starters. Also, the, we went through the, very painfully, the last class, where something like 1,000 people expressed interest in this job, and by the time it was over, just a handful ended up taking the test. The other thing is, we discussed the length of the, the training, because it's close to, how, how long is it, Doctor?
Five weeks in class and three weeks field training.
Yeah. And then all the, but there's a lot of other things that go into it, too, so it, it just is not conducive to getting people hired very quickly. There's a lot of checking that goes on and all the rest of it. So, and the other thing is that, and the questions that you, that you asked today bring to me the, one of the, you know, I guess the biggest problem that we have that really floats over everything is that we're not in control. The judges sentence the people, we've been working, he's been working with the prosecutor and also the public defender, doing a terrific job of trying to exactly do what you were talking about. And at the same time, I'd like you to bring up, Dr. Foxall, what you did with the probation office and also with the navigator, trying to get people out of there. Would you just briefly talk about that particular remedy?
Sure. One of the issues, and this came out of Management Council meeting, and one of the issues we've met with, with probation on, is how do we decrease number of bed, the bed days of individuals that come into our, come into our custody? And one of the things we're going to try is to expedite the pre-sentence investigations. So if we can reduce the amount of time it takes for PSI, pre-sentence investigation to be done, get that person back in front of the judge, get that person sentenced and get him out of the facility, that's going to open up beds, it's going to save me on bed days. Also, with respect to LB605, we have post-release supervision, custodial sanctions, going to get a, probation officers dedicated to meeting with those probation clients before they leave our facility, and then hopefully that will diminish the abscond rate or the violation of, of probations, so that return into, return to our facility. So we're going to house two probation officers, provide them with the office space. Hopefully, theoretically, that should have some impact on our population, but as I said, that's partnering with the other criminal justice entities in our community, and that's one approach to, to deal with that. That will have a direct or indirect impact on, on our overtime, if we can, if we can generate enough movement out of the facility to... If we can, if we can generate enough movement out of the facility to close down one of our housing units. I don't know, that along with some of the other initiatives that are on the table being looked at now. I hope we can get some relief that way. So as I said, we're brainstorming a lot of different things. We're working with our criminal justice partners to address this issue. That's one of the things that is going to come around pretty quick. Probation is ready to go. We just have to finish up some paperwork, get it moving, and then we'll be off and running on that. Once that's operational and live, I'll be able to report back to you on what the yield of that effort is.
So, you know, in summary, what's, what's taking place is with Dr. Foxall, Wester County Board has, has really come up with a number of diversions that are really important and we're working on. And one of them is the alcohol testing, which has reduced the population dramatically. And it's very successful. And it is a result of working with the judges to put that into place. And as you, as you know, as a practicing attorney, the judges control those sentences. And frankly, I don't blame them for being skittish on sentencing because something can blow up, as we've had happen not too long ago. Even when the judge was following procedures, it hit him right in the face and a terrible result occurred. So the judges really need to be convinced of the, the, the good plan that, you know, we're trying to reach, and that is to reduce the population. But also, Dr. Foxall has got a program put together that works with homelessness, trying to get people out of that cycle. And as we've met with Santa Frances House and others, because we have a lot of the same clients. And we're trying to get them out of that homelessness cycle, get them into, get them the social services they need and to break the cycle so they're not coming back through. And there are several people who are affectionately called frequent flyers who come back through again on pretty much of a cycle. And one of the biggest problems that we continue to really wrestle with is mental illness. On occasion, it hasn't happened often, but we, on occasion, we had a rescue squad pull in to the Sallyport. And they had a man who was restrained in a, on a gurney and tried to get us to take him. I mean, we're not a mental health institution, although that's what we do because we're, we're the last place of resort. We need to talk to the hospitals about stepping up to the plate to provide mental health services. Marianne Borderson is very active in that in recent 16. And it helps, we need to come up with solutions on that. So we're all trying to figure out how to get this done with very limited dollars. And I think, you know, there's another program out there and then I'll, I'll turn it back to the chair. But United Way has a program of diversion that's very effective. And frankly, Judge Lowe has done a terrific job over at county court of referring people to the mutual, or excuse me, the United Way program of diversion where United Way, for something like $50,000 a year contract with us, they place people with nonprofits and sometimes it leads to jobs. But they do that in lieu of being sentenced to, to the correction facility. And it really works very well. And they're going to be coming in probably with another request fairly soon. But in any event, I do want to say that the next meeting that we have, I will make sure that it appears as a committee meeting of the county board so that every commissioner is given the opportunity to attend. And really, to Dr. Foxall's delight, we can really drive down into the details of, of all the things that are going on. But yesterday was a very productive meeting. I think we had some good suggestions. And we're going to be sure all the rest of the commissioners get notified so that you can all be involved in that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Craft.
A lot of the issues I wanted to talk about have been addressed. But you mentioned the probation is ready to go. Any idea how soon they'll be implementing this?
I would say we should be good sometime in March. Just some, some contract language we have to work out. We should be good sometime in March.
And any idea how long it'll take us to see results?
Well, let's say that they start on March 1, okay? I can take a 30-day look at what their output is. And then, you know, really, it takes three to five years to see, to get some kind of trend analysis. But in six months, I should have some idea as to what's going on. I guess it's going to take that long, sit those folks and then get those people into the, into a process that impacts the dates at which the sentences are set. And then six months, I should have some preliminary, very, very preliminary data.
In the short time you've been director, I think you've done an excellent job. You've taken on increased responsibility, new programs, a lot of initiatives, and I can't praise you enough. You said we were 43 under with the addition of the new hires?
Correct.
Okay. So when do they, their graduation is when?
Graduate in five weeks and have three weeks of, of training on the floors and then they're on their own. So eight weeks out.
And that's counting them. So actually, we're 54 short at the moment, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I needed to get my head around that. And you run into situations that are few and far between, but they happen. I was reading a complaint by somebody who is deaf and hard of hearing, profoundly deaf. And my daughter works with the deaf and hard of hearing. Plus, I've had deaf employees and members of deaf employee families. And there are major issues in communication. A slight change in how somebody signs something can mean something very different. And not knowing the particulars of this particular complaint, nor wanting to discuss them here, do you have anybody who on staff who is a qualified sign language interpreter?
We did, but not many. And we have, we have had several meetings to upgrade some of our technology with respect to the deaf and hard of hearing.
The, Commissioner Boyle talked about the wage creep and everything. And just so everybody knows, this can dramatically affect, since you are a major part of our budget, the wage creep and putting things right, sometimes we have to do, make the hard decision. And people say, make the hard decision, which is, they think is cutting. Sometimes you have to add to, you can't cut. Because when you cut too far, the, the horse you're using, if you cut his diet too much, he's going to die. And if you don't have that horse to ride, I don't know if this analogy is making sense. Claire, is this making sense?
He likes the horse part. Can you bring in goats?
If you want your goat herd to thrive, you have to feed them. Here, we feed with monetary means, with benefits. If we don't pay an adequate wage to get people started, if we don't take care of the wage creep, if our staffing dries up to the point where it's dangerous, one or two lawsuits can cost us millions of dollars. Plus, we can have state and federal sanctions put on us. And I see you nodding in agreement. I just want to make sure the public knows that. So we have to take care of your department. It's important. And if it means we have to raise taxes, then we have to raise taxes. And I know I'm going to get a barrage of nasty emails because of this. But this is the reality. We have to put substance into what we want, substance into what we say. And what is a substance? Sometimes it's working smarter, which we've been doing and doing very well. And sometimes it takes additional resources. And I'm not ashamed or afraid to say, the hard choice sometimes is raising taxes. That's the extra hard choice. Because, believe me, it affects me tremendously. Overtime, wage creep, we discussed that. You're under budget, which is good. And you've done what is necessary to try to take care of the manpower. Certain things are beyond your control. I'm sure I said too much, but thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
You didn't say too much. First, I want to thank you and your people there for the good job that you've done and do. And I mean that sincerely. I also want to thank Commissioner Boyle for his chair in this and watching it very closely. When you stated some of the matters have been discussed, but the 20% less we pay than Potawatomi County, how would we compare with the state?
I cannot speak as to what their starting wage is. I know it's changed. I know that they've offered some incentives. So I'm not prepared to speak to what their salary structure is.
Okay. And you don't like to follow other people, but you know that we're in that market and it is necessary to most likely have to start to discuss that. I appreciate that you're going to have a meeting and involve all of us wherever. I think that'd be good because this is a big priority. And I think in a few weeks, we don't have a meeting next week, maybe a committee meeting in the next two, three weeks with you and a couple of people you want to have participate. I think all of us discussing this matter is important. What Mark Craft said, the safety, and that's why sometimes you have to bite the bullet and increase the budget because we want to be certain that we're providing a safe, secure environment there. And having that shortfall of 43 employees is worrisome. So again, I commend your people for the good work they're doing, plus yourself and your leadership. Thank you.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Boil.
Thank you. Golly, this is kind of, really kind of discouraging. I mean, we've, not for a while, but I remember giving a million dollars of raises once out to corrections officers in one fell swoop. And, and it was something we needed to do. We needed to be brought current. The growth in criminal justice is just, of course, breaking us. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to, you know, we're looking at expanding our courthouse and that's already going to put such a strain on our budget. And now these issues that you're having, but, but you and your staff are so good, it's real easy for us to be kind of, that you're out of sight, out of mind. You know, that you're doing everything we ask of you and therefore, why bother with it? This does need our attention. I would ask Marcos, our negotiator, if he would do kind of an extensive. I mean, I didn't realize Pot County was paying four bucks an hour more than us to, to start.
Commissioner Duda, can I just, I just want to advise the board, can we be careful just on the personnel discussions, just walk the line?
All right. I, I, I get that, but I still would like more information on what our competition is paying.
Commissioners, if I, if I could, jump in just for a second. So it's complicated because we have contract negotiations and then we have the need to obviously discuss this important matter in public. And as part of that complication, we have two things. We have wage surveys that include your comparables. When you do comparables, you use jurisdictions that are populations half the size to twice the size. So traditionally, we do not include counties like Sarpy and Pot County in our surveys. However, the other side of that coin is that that is, in this case, the actual competition in addition to the OPD for employees. So there's a lot of things that you have to take into account. And, and so as you discuss this in open, also keep in mind that, that some of this stuff is going to have to be done in executive session because we have to negotiate wages. We can't just necessarily do it all in public. We have to sit at the table and negotiate the give and take with salary, benefits, and working conditions.
I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll shut up in a minute before I say too much. But what I am asking of Marcos is, I would like to look at more than just what is in our typical array, the counties that are comparable to our size. We never include the state in our array. I want to know how we compare to the state. I want to know the real competition in the real world. I want to know how we stack up by that. Thank you.
Commissioner Boil.
Commissioner Duda is right on point. And the things I've heard, Mr. Craft and the rest, are absolutely could not drill down better. So it's pretty great to see us all focusing on those points. And I do want to say that yesterday at the meeting, we are so fortunate to have the leadership of the Fraternal Order of Police at, at our table yesterday, talking about solving these recruiting problems and all these things. And pay was brought up right in front of them. And of course, with my mouth, I did more than Commissioner Duda did. And I was sort of shut down. But anyway, the point is that you have, those are really important points. You know, I was not aware that we were in that pay range either. But we talked about a lot of things. The union is very cooperative. We have a great relationship. Dr. Foxall has really nurtured that. And so we are in a real sweet spot, which is really good. Everybody's, everybody is on the same page, which is terrific. So we're going to really work on that and keep this relationship going and keep everybody informed. And this has been a great discussion for me in addition to what we had yesterday. One final point, I believe that we are competitive with the state. I remember seeing a news story of a billboard down in Tecumseh, trying to draw people down there. And it was, the pay range was, I think, $17 or $18 an hour. And on one note, we did have one candidate who accepted for us and then said no and took a job with the state. And then he came back and said, the commute is killing me, the Lincoln. And so anyhow, he's back in the throes of being put on as our employee. So anyway, the points I heard today were really on point. And so we're going to have, have another big committee meeting and involve everybody and open it to the public.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes. And I noticed when I brought up the issue of increasing taxes if necessary, Chris Burbach was writing furiously. And I glanced to my left and I noticed a couple commissioners had tears in their eyes. So I want to apologize for any trauma I brought to any of the other commissioners.
Seeing no further comment. Mark, can I ask you, just on that, can you put in context the point you made yesterday about it's not just salary, the overall complete piece? So we can have that in context.
Sure. I, I, it's not just, it's not just about money. There's a lot of things in, in the operational environment determine an individual's desire to become a corrections officer or to stay with the Department of Corrections over, over the long haul. And as I said, the population tick up is, it impacts that because then it drives the overtime and it drives the mandatory overtime. People want to be home with their family. They want to be working mandatory overtime. I mean, we have the voluntary opportunities, but they want to be home with their family. And I get that. But when you have the type of environment that we have evolved to over time, then it's a tough place to work. And corrections is a tough job. People see things and are engaged in, in, in different facets of, of work with, with inmates that it makes it a difficult job. We have good training. I think we have a good vetting process for the people that come on board. But then again, as I've spoken to you in the past, there's things that we don't control. The number of arrests coming in, 34 bookings in about six and a half hours yesterday. That's a lot on day shift. A population of 1,282 in the, in the dead of winter. All of the housing units of being open. Remember, just a few years ago, we had seven, eight housing units closed. Closed, okay? Those days are gone. And it's not like this evolved over, you know, 10 or 15 years. Bam, this spike came on, came on, it was quick. And that puts us in, in a lurch and scrambling for, for alternatives or ways to deal with a rising population. And you recall in the early part of 2017, looking at what was going on in 2016 and hoping that 2016 was an anomalous year. Well, folks, it's not, okay? And we see a bump from 2015 and 2016. We see a huge bump in 2017. And now we're continuing to see those numbers rise in, in 17. The numbers in 17 are higher than they were in 16 or higher than they were in 15. So again, mental health, developmentally disabled, more bookings, more serious and violent offenders coming in. And I think to, one of the commissioners mentioned it, the impact on criminal justice. And I think, one of the commissioners mentioned it, the impact on criminal justice system, it's not just us, okay? Other criminal justices are feeling the pressure as well. We see it differently than they do because of living in our facility. So when you sit down to try to craft a solution to this, you got to look more than just beyond getting people to come in the door. You have to look at a lot of different things that impact. Numbers of people coming in, types of people coming in, types of charges that are coming in. You've got to work with all the criminal justice partners, not just one, not just the judiciary. You've got to work with all three branches of the government to try to figure this thing out. And it's, for me, it's beyond an HR issue. It's an HR issue, but it's a whole bunch of other stuff, too. So you need to sit around the table and you ask, well, what can you do? Well, there's a whole lot of disciplines involved in addressing what's going on with us right now. So I'll take the wisdom of everybody at the table to try to structure a way through this until if and when the population abates. But I will tell you, you look at our trend, our population trend over time, and we were rising for a while. And we made some moves within the agency and our population dropped. In 2014, 13, I think, our ADP, our average daily population, had dropped to a really good number. That's when we had several houses that just closed, you know, four or five months out of the year. And they've just swung upwards. So I still believe in our ability, the leadership of our organization, the leadership of the FOP, to be able to, and the ACOA, they've helped us with the recruiting piece, too. So it's all hands on deck to be able to address this trend. But we've had some success in the past. And I have to remain optimistic that we'll have success in the future. I can't be pessimist because then you don't innovate when you're in that mode. So you have to remain optimistic. You have to be able to innovate. And that's the challenge that's before me.
Commissioner Boyle.
I just wanted to mention that in listening to Mark, something else that we need to do a better job of publicizing, excuse me, I'm a member, and Dr. Foxall, I think, is the chair. I think he was lucky to be, we were lucky to have him be reelected chair of the Criminal Justice Committee. It meets, as a matter of fact, on Thursday, the 22nd, at 11:45 in the Jesse Low Conference Room on the third floor. And it is really an impressive showing. We have presiding judges there. We have the city prosecutor. We have the public defender. All of these people are there themselves. We have the Omaha Police there, Douglas County Sheriff, Region Six, all these folks and ones that deal with mental illness. It's really a very productive meeting. And there's a whole review of all the way from what the clerk of the district court does and just all the way down on what's happening in the criminal justice system. And it's a real good roundup of what's taking place. And, you know, from data processing, whatever it's called, TIT, and all the other elements of.
AI.
Yeah, of criminal justice are discussed. So, and you're welcome to attend that. That's the 22nd, this Thursday, or not this Thursday, but the 22nd of February at 11:45. It lasts really about an hour and a few minutes. So it's a very productive, short meeting. Thank you.
Mark, also, can you, I know you have been working on it. Can you and Mike, and even bring a roof hiper down if needed and talk next month about just where you're at? Just to get the board update of the conversation we had pretrial-wise and where you all are.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And just one more piece. I'm assuming in the report, when you talk about working with Department of Labor, is that HWS, Heartland Workforce, you're working with when you say you're working with Department of Labor?
Mr. Myers, my community corrections manager, couldn't speak better to that than I.
Good morning, Commissioners. To answer your question, it's actually the Department of Labor, you know, they're a partner in the HWS one-stop. This is actually just them individually doing some work with veterans in the veterans community. And we will also have additional opportunities that they are going to be working with us on over the coming months. It is all connected. I'm not an expert on how the whole workforce development system is interlinked with all the separate entities and how they're related and how they function independently. But this is directly with the Department of Labor on some specific veteran-related opportunities at the current time.
Okay. Commissioner Borges.
Mark, could you provide us with, and I don't know for sure if Senator McCallister has prioritized that bill on the phone?
He has.
Could you provide us with the programs and services we provide that will potentially, most likely, if we lose that revenue, be cut? You don't have to do it now.
Yes, I can. Yes, yeah, I could do it now off the top of my head, but I wouldn't, I didn't want to leave anything out. So I will provide you with the listing of those programs. And I believe that bill has been prioritized.
Seeing no further questions, is there a, you got anything else to add, Mark? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the?
Second.
It's motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan to adjourn. Please vote.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your help.
Absent all other Commissioners present voting yes, motion passes.
We'll now call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft is away right now, Commissioner Morgan, and Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one, minutes and claims. A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February 6, 2018. Item B, approval of the claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, February 2018. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
I am abstaining on that there as a chair. Dan, you heard me.
Yes. Commissioner Kraft, did you want to vote on the claims and minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Borgeson? Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan is abstaining, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Item two is consent agenda. Do we have two items? What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, just second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Seeing no questions, please vote.
Okay. Motion passes. Commissioner Boyle is voting no. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
On B, and I need to explain my vote, I am opposed to the dam site that's being built for whatever reason at Ida Street. So we fought that, and I'm not going to vote yes for the bids.
Okay. Item three is recognition and proclamations. Item A, recognition of the following county employees retired. Donna Banks retired from the Douglas County Department of Corrections after eighteen years of service. Ms. Banks can't be here. We thank her for her service. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Vote yes.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Item four is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens here that want to speak on any item that's not officially listed on the Douglas County Board of Commissioners agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to the committee reports and Item A, Finance Committee, Commissioners as presented. Item G, Human Resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report and civil service. Item two is legislative issues. We'll go to, and just note for the record, Item B from the board last week, Congress passed the budget, so that issue took itself off the docket and the community health centers have been funded for two years. Item C is discussion and action on legislative bill 158. Commissioner Borgeson, I'll let you lead in with that or just?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of this legislation, that we already do this in providing representation for juveniles in court as Lancaster does. And we support that. But with this bill, this would increase our cost as Douglas County in increasing the court filing fees by a dollar to go into this now juvenile indigent fund. You've heard Public Defender Tom Riley come before this board and talk about how the dollars that we're spending to put into this public advocacy office down in Lincoln is basically taking away from the services here in Douglas County that our Public Defender are providing. This increases, and some people will say, well, it's not very much. It's only about $11,727. But again, it is an increase to our taxpayers in court fees that are filed by our county attorney. So in my opinion, I think we should be opposing this. The only reason it came about with the increase in the filing fees is because the western counties didn't feel that they had the finances to fund such a thing if they were mandated to provide representation for their juveniles. So now, here again, we are looked at as Douglas County and having to provide this for everybody across the state. So again, it's not that I'm against it. I am all for having children have representation, but I'm just making everybody aware that it is going to increase our cost by almost $12,000.
Seeing no comment. Commissioner Duda.
A question if I may, Commissioner Borgeson, would you prefer us to be opposed to the bill or just opposed to the dollar increase in the filing fee? Can we take a stand on that?
Yeah, sure.
Just in opposition to the increase of the filing fee?
Sure, yeah.
I would make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda and a second by Commissioner Boyle. Mr. Clerk, are you clear on the motion?
To oppose the filing fee?
Increase.
The increase, sorry, increase in the filing fee.
Let me know when you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Motion passes, all voting yes.
We do have a need for a quick executive session for the quarterly legal issues, so we will officially go in under litigation. Okay. There is, is there a motion, a second to go in the executive? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Boyle, to go into executive session for litigation. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Duda? Okay. Motion passes, all voting yes.
And again, for the public, we are going into executive session for the purpose of litigation. That's right. That's right.